Seven minutes went pretty quick, so.
Thank you, and welcome to the Hart Special Budget Meeting. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Hart Board of Directors meeting for Monday, September 22nd, for the adoption of Hart Fiscal Year 2015 Final Milage and Budget for Fiscal Year 2015. I hereby open the public hearing this evening on the Fiscal Year 2015 Budget for Hart. Anyone who anticipates that they may wish to speak this evening will need to sign in and identify themselves. At a duly advertised public hearing held on September 8th, 2014, the Hart Board of Directors adopted the proposed Fiscal Year 2015 Milage Rate and adopted the Fiscal Year 2015 Hart Tentative Annual Budget. Tonight, the Hart Board of Directors approves the final mileage and budget for Fiscal Year 2015. We have made available for you, on the table at the back of the room, documents summarizing the final Fiscal Year 2015 Budget. These documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing, which I will now outline. We will consider the adoption of the following resolutions. The resolution to adopt the levying of ad valorem taxes and the Fiscal Year 2015 Final Milage Rate, and the resolution adopting the final Fiscal Year 2015 Hart Annual Budget. Each part of the hearing will be conducted as follows. Hart finance staff will read the titles of the resolutions on which specific action is needed. The board will then open the public hearing for citizen comments. In order to allow every interested part of the opportunity to speak, speaker comments are limited to three minutes. After citizen comments, the board will then move to approve the required resolutions adopting the final milage rate and final budget. Prior to our discussion of proposed resolutions, we're required by state statutes to discuss the Fiscal Year 2015 Final Milage Rate and final Fiscal Year 2015 Budget. Staff, please provide the details on the budget. We have specific key goals that we were looking to achieve in this next year's budget. Again, maintaining current service levels, adhering to the transit development plan for service enhancements, continued long-term fiscal sustainability, a goal each year in our budget development, and to prepare Hart for future growth, specifically focusing on making Hart an employer of choice, reinvestment of new revenues, and forward-thinking programs. Balancing needs with revenue. Hart's FY 2015 proposed budget offers the following key elements. Maintains current bus and paratransit service levels. Savings of over $1.1 million through our level of service process and internal cost savings. Addition of over 19,000 hours of service enhancements to five routes, which equates a 2.3% increase in service. That's the second consecutive year that we have added enhancements to existing routes. Bargaining step increases and performance bonuses pursuant to the collective bargaining contracts. Non-bargaining costs of living wage adjustments at 3%. Addition of 18.87 new FTEs to the organization for next year. Some of those positions are being utilized for that 19,000 hours of new service. Other positions are being utilized to help offset workloads and be able to provide some of the projects that we have discussed within this budget. An anticipated 12% increase in healthcare costs is covered. Again, that is the determination of what we expect to see, an increase in claims for next year. That is covered in the budget. Funding for the following activities. CNG, operations and maintenance. This will be the first full year that we have the CNG fueling station operative, and we have an O&amp;M contract for that, or will have. One bus away, maintenance and support. Again, this is the first full year of going live, and we have operations and maintenance support for that application. Televising of all Board of Director meetings. Again, we were directed to schedule that for next year. That's been done. A bus rodeo. Upgrades to operator training materials, something that has not been done for some time at Hart. Improvements for operator and staff recruitment to curb attrition. And improvements for customer service and van operations. And again, for the second consecutive year, no use of fund balance to balance the budget for FY 15. You are quite familiar with this five-year look ahead. This has been unchanged since our June presentation of the budget to you. Again, we're looking at an estimate of little over $1 million, dropping to fund balance of additional revenues over expenses for the coming year. As we do each year, we will have strict cost controls moving forward out of the gate as of October the 1st, ensuring that even though it is budgeted, we will still ask the question, does it still need to be spent? And we will pursue that philosophy moving forward. We feel confident that these red deficits, we will be able to mitigate in the coming years. Again, this reflects all of our out-year TDP priorities as far as a status quo plan is concerned. FY 15 budget, and I will not go through this in detail, a couple key highlights. Again, we're looking at extending the life of our facility assets, expending the investments necessary for them to fulfill their useful life and go beyond their useful life. So, once we are in a position of additional revenues in the future, we will be able to focus on that outward service, an outward infrastructure, and we'll be set with our house in order. So, the CEO recommended proposed FY 2015 budget. Operating expenditures of 65.8, capital expenditures of $18 million, which is about $5 million less than the current budget. And again, that's due to us closing out the county CIT funding and agreement. Specifically, the proposed budget provides for savings of $1.1 million internally. Talked about these in the past. Continued emphasis on out-year fiscal sustainability and all of these numbers in detail, we will discuss as we move through the budget tonight. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the staff before we go forward? Okay. We'll now take public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to speak about the presentation that we just heard and anything else concerning the budget? I see no one. We'll now, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and open the floor. No discussion, I assume. We will now take a vote on Fiscal Year 2015 Final Milage Rate and Final Budget. Public comment has already been heard, or not heard in this case, and the resolution will now be read. Staff?
A resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the Fiscal Year 2015 Milage Rate of .500 mils for Hillsborough Transit Authority and providing for an effective date. Whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, held two public hearings as required by Florida Statute 200.065. And whereas, the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Hillsborough County has been certified by the county property appraiser to the Hillsborough Transit Authority as $67,397,136. And whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, set forth to adopt a milage rate of .5000 mils following two public hearings as required by Florida Statute 200.065. Whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, set forth to adopt a milage rate of, and I just said that one. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority that, Section 1, adopt the Fiscal Year 2015 Milage Rate of .5000 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of .4751 mils by 5.24%. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Resolution number R20140944. A resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the Fiscal Year 2015 Hillsborough Transit Authority Annual Budget and providing for an effective date. Whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, held two public hearings as required by Florida Statute 200.065. And whereas, the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the Fiscal Year 2015 Hart Annual Budget in the amount of $83,898,391. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough Transit Authority that, Section 1, adopt the Fiscal Year 2015 Hart Annual Budget of $83,898,391. And Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Okay. Thank you, staff. Okay, state statute require that we approve the final milage rate before we approve the final budget. Do I have a motion to adopt milage rate for Fiscal Year 2015 as presented in Resolution Number R2014-09-43? Move approval? We have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? No. Do I have a motion to adopt the Fiscal Year 2015 Hart Annual Budget as presented in Resolution Number R2014-09-44? Do I have a second? Second? Please say aye for approval. Aye? Any nays? None. In compliance with Federal Florida Statute, excuse me, two public hearings have been held on September 8th, 2014, and September 22nd, 2014, for the purpose of considering the ad valorem milage rate necessary to fund the Hart budget for Fiscal Year 2015. This concludes the public hearing component of tonight's regular board meeting. Okay, now to start with the regular board meeting, do I need an approval of minutes from our September 8th meeting? Second? Second. Second? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, very good. Any more public input? Anyone in the public would like to make any kind of comment concerning the current agenda for this regular hearing? I see no one. Okay, we have a presentation from Metro B. I think that's Mr. Edelberg? Or are you going to do it?
No, I just have a brief introduction for you.
Okay, good.
Good evening. Ruthie Reyes Burghardt, interim chief operating officer for Hart. Metro B's solution is a unique, community-based concept that uses GPS directed shared vehicles to efficiently deliver riders to and from public transit. Urban sprawl limits the availability of mass transit for people located beyond a convenient 15-minute or one-half mile walking distance to and from a bus stopper station. The last mile problem is a global concern. With efforts to design a solution attempted by organizations large and small, Metro B founder Ben Edelberg here to introduce us to their concept.
And just before Ben gets started, I'm sorry to interrupt. Metro B is currently based on the West Coast, and just wanted to give a quick overview. They're here talking tonight about their model, the plan which they have, excuse me there. And we showed you a short video back in June. We did want to stress that we will be talking to the staff about ideas and options and solutions here in Hillsborough County. They are aware that our regulatory climate is a little different than what they might have experienced in California. So, just bear in mind, when tonight's presentation on their current business model does not look like it's necessarily what works here in Hillsborough County. This is what they're starting with, and we'll be talking with them further if the board so desires us to pursue, seeing if we can bring this business over to the East Coast. So, now, take it away.
Thank you so much for the introduction. I think it was so thorough, I might not have anything left to say to the board. I'd like to thank Mr. Burns and the team at Hart for inviting me here to share our last mile solution. My background and passion is for architecture and urbanism. I grew up in the Los Angeles area, where I believe I was given a very special sneak preview with regards to congestion, automobile lifestyles, and its effect upon our communities and upon our own lives within our communities. I've watched for 20 years how we've built trains in Los Angeles and have worked on a solution on how to activate those trains within communities that were built for automobiles. Metro B is a unique and proprietary new system for urban transportation, specifically solving what is called the last mile problem. We have partnered with top universities in transportation and urban planning. We are currently working towards pilot launches in the communities of Oakland, Emeryville in Berkeley, and the East Bay of San Francisco. And I'm honored to present to the Hillsborough communities towards your consideration of a pilot program here. As requested, this is a very brief presentation of our solution. This is a preamble to a much more in-depth solution tomorrow, which will explore the algorithm, our methodologies, and the actual software that's running our system. This is more of an introduction this evening. Metro B asks you to imagine public transit at your front door, or to imagine a ride home from the train anytime, on demand. In essence, the system is transit to home, transit to work. It's based on a 15-minute guarantee. This is key in the urban planning world. It is a fixed-rate system, and it is an on-demand mobility system. The mobility model we have today will not work tomorrow. This is Bill Ford's, Bill Ford's words. Ford is moving from an automobile manufacturer to a mobility service provider. Traffic across our country is growing tremendously. The fact is, is that our current infrastructures are not keeping up with population. When cities stop moving, so does commerce. What are the effects upon our lifestyles? What are effects upon climate? Metro B is a solution to this. In response, there is currently $80 billion being spent on rail transit in North America. Top universities in transit are saying unless the last mile problem is solved, these investitures will have problems finding their full effect within our communities. That's our job. Three problems with regards to public transit and the consumer. Number one, urban density, the complexity of distances between points A and B within our communities as a result of designing our cities around cars. Secondly, safety. I'll speak to my hometown. Depending on neighborhood and the time of day, a three-block walk from the bus to a home is a potentially dangerous situation for the consumer. And thirdly, a lifestyle that we've built around our automobiles. We're proposing a transportation solution that is on-demand and door-to-door to help the consumer to replace cars and adopt a transit solution. Key fundament to using transit in our communities in urban planning is the 15 minutes equals one-half mile walk radius. You can see in a city like New York, there is absolutely no problem with the community having access to and from transit. This is a function of urban density, and this is a function of a transit system being built at the right time in our communities. This is my hometown of Los Angeles and what the transit lines will look like in 2023. The pink line is still being built and the blue line to the ocean. There is simply no way to build enough transit stops in low-density cities to serve the public with a transit option. What if we could take this exact same 15 minutes, which is key for the public utilizing mass transit, and expand this from a half-mile to a four-mile radius? The access map of a city like Los Angeles would change dramatically from this to this. This is on current infrastructure, utilizing existing stations with a system that is ready to implement right now. How does this support transit-oriented developments, which is a growing trend within American cities as well? Imagine we have not only provided a link to the larger mass transit system per se, but we have also provided a one-way, four-mile connector to transit nodes which are quickly becoming the new centers of our communities as they continue to grow and adopt transit solutions. To break down the system simply. The Metro B system is comprised of Bs. These are fleets of shared vehicles, which are assigned drop-off and retrieval duties for specific transit nodes. These are shared vehicles. The algorithm is based upon a 15-minute promise. We have simulated that we can put up to five people within a single vehicle per trip while not exceeding the 15-minute promise to the consumer. Again, we have simulated this exhaustively, and I will be sharing these simulations tomorrow with staff as we continue this conversation. The Bs travel around an area which is a hive. These are transit nodes within our communities that consumers wish to access. I did not give you too much information on the background of our company. My partner runs a company in Detroit. We are very connected with the auto industry. The interest of the auto industry in the Metro B solution is because we are running vehicles around a given node, we don't have issues of range, which makes electric or alternative-fuel vehicles very viable for the system because we don't have to build exhaustive infrastructure to support the system. The system travels around a swarm. This is a GPS smartphone-based network linking the Metro B fleet from any location to the hive. We are also looking to, and there is precedent, that we can expand the system beyond smartphone to include text message solutions so as not to exclude certain members of the community. Depending upon how you look at the range, a conservative estimate is that one Metro B on the road removes 42 cars off the street. Very briefly, what are the carbon impacts of this? What are the gasoline impacts of this? What are the household budget impacts of this reduction? This is a conservative number. Depending upon how we lay out the system, we've seen numbers as high as 115 or 120 cars removed for every car we put on. These numbers are also based upon gasoline-burning vehicles. How to use Metro B? We are an app-based system. It is subscription-based. We cannot be in a situation where we have 50,000 people sign up today and expect to be able to provide service tomorrow. We will have to grow the service subscription with the fleet of vehicles to maintain the correct balance for service. A car is instantly directed to your location. Trip itinerary and total costs are calculated. This is a conversation that's going on in the East Bay with regards to connecting to their Clipper card system. How is it possible to create a billing system for Hart that advances towards an app-based solution? Can Metro B help with that platform? Relax while others are picked up within the 15-minute promise. And finally, transit to destination. Our vehicle is the 2014 Ford Transit Connect. It is a seven-passenger vehicle that we have modified to five passengers comfortably. You never have to crawl over somebody else to get in and out of the vehicle. We've also modified with Wi-Fi and bike racks for the vehicles. Some bullet points. Metro B is seeking strategic partnerships within the communities that we are addressing. We are a company, and every single community could present a different model for how we could partner. This has to do with different climate grants, subsidies, et cetera, that are available into each community. But our goal is to create strategic partnership with stakeholders, transit and the municipality, and share ownership and share profit with each of the communities that we address. On the transit side, a quick list of the benefits. I'll highlight. The key to Metro B is solving access and increasing ridership of transit systems. On the municipal side, Metro B's goal is to reduce congestion, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and connect a society and community better with its transit systems as it's developing past the car age. And finally, on the community side, number one is safer access to transit, safer mobility within our communities, affordable access to transit, helping household budgets, and creating several quality, many, many quality jobs within the community in the forms of riders. Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions, Mr. Edelberg? Mr. Berg? Mr. Roche, go ahead.
Thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you.
Couple of questions that I had, because this reminds me very much of some other ridesharing programs like Uber and Lyft. How do you compare to those two business models? Is it very similar, or what might be the differences?
Frankly, our model is, the similarity is only that we're using vehicles and that we are using apps to drive and connect customers to those vehicles. Fundamentally, without getting into the business models, which I think would be better for tomorrow's conversation, the fundamental difference is Metro B was designed to reduce congestion by grouping several people together within the vehicles, and Metro B is designed to bolster and support transit. We believe that taxis and limousines have a great place within the transit ecosystem, and we're not trying to replace that market. We're trying to bolster public transit within the community.
Okay, so, and then, the only other question was, you had a graph that said that you would remove 42 cars from the road. What is the assumption for that calculation?
That's assuming that the people that are using our system are using our system instead of using their own vehicles to get to and from work because we're enabling access to transit. Another way to look at it, when we're working in the East Bay with the BART organization, for example, is that there is extensive waiting lists at the parking lots for transit that they're experiencing, and we're offering a valve to allow those customers to access without using their personal vehicles.
Okay. And then, the only other question I might have, I don't know that, it might just be a statement. I know that the Public Transportation Commission has a cap on the number of medallions that, you know, keep, you know, vehicles like you from operating within the county. How might that work?
That is a fantastic, no, that's a really good question. And based on the board's feedback, tomorrow, we're obviously having a longer meeting tomorrow with Metro B to learn a little bit more about how they're delivering service and also help them understand that we are 1.3 million people spread out over 1,000 square miles. I mean, you want to talk about a sparsely-developed area farther out? That's what we are. So, make sure they understand what we look like and see how that comes together with their business needs or an opportunity for us to come up with a pilot. So, for instance, when we carry somebody on our van service, even on our flex service, it is not an inexpensive service. Our paratransit vans are $35 a trip. If we find a way that we can do a flat-rate partnership for anything less than $35 a trip, I personally feel that we have an obligation to check and make sure that there's nothing else that could be done with those taxpayer funds. So, based on what we hear tomorrow, we'll come back with a list of questions we have to ask, and we obviously don't want to do anything running afoul of our friends at the PTC. So, we'll be starting off with what the constraints are in the county and how we go about looking at a pilot even, that's not going to get any feathers ruffled.
I think Josh was next, and Mr. Beckner?
So, as I've reviewed the material here, it looks like you're currently functioning in Oakland, or?
No, sir. We're working towards a pilot in the East Bay. We currently are, do not have any cars running, and we are looking for our first pilot program.
Understood. So, you're primarily, at this point, at a concept stage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, for one, board members, think this is really fascinating. You know, over the past few years, there've been times when I've felt as though anybody that wasn't just jumping up and down about a massive tax increase was somehow being considered a knuckle-dragger that was opposed to innovation, and that's just not the case. And in this situation, hearing about what your business is proposing to do, and even some of the other rideshare options that exist out there, leads me to believe that maybe it is appropriate for an agency like ours to think about a workshop, or think about continued conversation about what does the future of transit look like? Okay, if we set aside, if we set aside the big-ticket spending dreams that some here in our community have, not denigrating any of them in the slightest, but if we set them aside and think about, okay, well, how do we get choice riders to and from either a bus route, a dedicated bus route, or a train line? And as his presentation points out, if it's over a half-mile, and I suggest here in Florida with humidity and heat, it might be a little less than a half-mile, it's just not going to happen. So, until we have a means by which people can literally walk out of the house, walk to the corner, and safely get in effectively an air-conditioned vehicle with high-speed internet, with a bike rack, all the various amenities that would be necessary, I don't think we're going to see choice, no matter what platform we have for long-distance commutes. So, to me, this is fascinating. It represents innovation. I will stop short of taking any, making any sort of comments on the PTC's recent decisions, but I will say that if the press was correct in its recent report of a 30-minute delay and a minimum $30 charge, wow. On one hand, we propose major tax increases. On the other hand, we're not going to look at what could be truly competitive sorts of different approaches to delivering commutes. And I understand at the same time, we do have industry players that have been around a long time. They have capital in the skin in the game, and they need some sort of assurances they're going to get past there. All of that said, if it pleases this board, and whether we want to do this today, direct today or at some other time, I would love to see us have a workshop. I'd love to see us continue our conversation with this gentleman here, and potentially bring in some of the other players in this new transit economy to say, to kind of project what they see over the event horizon. We know that some of the other players do have massive capitalizations, enormous research dollars available. We should hear, and we should have that as part of the broader conversation on transportation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I also am very fascinated about the concept that you have.
Thank you, sir.
And I think when the questions were answered, it's going to be fascinating to see what you, the density that you run your models off of, how that may fit into our community because as was because as was mentioned, we are a very, we don't have a lot of dense areas compared to the geography here. I think it will also be interesting to see how the PTC treats this, because I would imagine that, I would think on the surface, that it might look very similar to the issues that they're having with Uber and with Lyft. So from a regulatory standpoint, it'll be interesting to see how you are viewed. You haven't run into that, or you haven't experienced that, because you're not running in any other communities, right?
We're not, we haven't experienced that. We have done research in the California area. I'm sure that the laws and structures are completely different. The way that we're approaching regulation within the California market is we're very similar to a super shuttle system that brings you to and from the airport. Quite frankly, we're not trying to replace taxi service. We're trying to pick up the service that taxi drivers are reluctant to take, which is the very short trip. And if we can group others together, and that trip is also inefficient for the consumer, what we're trying to do is fill that niche within the market with a service that is affordable for the consumer, and if we cannot provide the service or it's too far and it looks like a taxi trip, our proposal is to actually direct the consumer to the taxis.
And from what I understood, stand from your model, is it, am I correct in saying that your transportation would not pick up somebody and take them anywhere they want to go? It's a specified node, right?
Our system is to bolster public transit and to bolster the public transit nodes. However, the concept of the node can be expanded to include retail developments, commercial developments, workplaces, et cetera.
So you would have a menu of point A, B, C, or D, or whatever your nodes are. You would identify places that you would pick up people from and then transport them to that specific node?
Yes, sir. It's a uniquely different model.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dr. Bozine?
Yeah. You'd mentioned subscription. Is it, are they pre-committed to a routine frequency in a specific time so that you can do, in effect, scheduling and batch in advance? Or is it dynamic, but they're simply registered as part of your system?
I use the term "subscription" with regards to, at this point, looking at the market that we've been looking at, to identification within the system only, not necessarily a paid subscription. However, in conversations with other municipal bodies such as this, the question has come up with regards to equanimity of access to the system and the possibility of subsidizing certain members within the community with certain needs, et cetera. What's fascinating about an algorithmic-based system such as ours, or a database system such as ours, is each passenger within the vehicle could be effectively paying a different price depending upon their situation.
You referenced that this is targeted to transit, but obviously, the concept of, you know, app-based dispatching and could serve other purposes. If you looked at a mechanism where, for example, off-peak, you'd have excess capacity that you could deploy, perhaps serving paratransit trips, trips to shopping centers, government centers, et cetera. Have you tried to blend it so that your assets are kind of deployed continuously throughout the day at all?
Our interest is to keep the vehicles working and the drivers working all day long. I believe that the scenarios vary from community to community. And again, that's why we're looking at a model of sharing ownership with the communities that we come to so that we can find a specific fit to this community.
Okay, finally, you mentioned simulation analysis, but I'd encourage you to look at characterizing this as an access mode within a regional travel model and seeing how trip distance, destination, parking cost, and propensity, you know, fare structures, et cetera, play against your model. It seems to me that a 15-minute wait time plus an access link plus a marginal cost would make sense in a market with high parking costs and pretty severe congestion levels. But if you look, for example, at your Los Angeles map and your overlapping concentric rings, if you looked at what OD pairs are more optimal, you know, you could define which share of, or how close to optimal minimum path your mechanism was relative to other choices in the system and get some sense of competitiveness for that network. Because it, again, we're real different than California in a lot of respects, and it would be more challenging to define market segments here that are robust enough to afford an access cost and time penalty that's then amortized over a longer trip length, et cetera, to kind of make economic sense for travelers.
To comment, we don't find our system to be a one-size-fits-all system, nor is it a silver bullet that's applicable to any community that we go into. Feasibility right now is happening on the academic level in the form of a feasibility study to look at vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas emissions within the East Bay. If tomorrow's meeting is as, shows as promising as this meeting, I would suggest that that feasibility study be expanded to look at the Tampa area. And secondly, I would suggest that we begin, as we've been spending the last seven months evaluating the East Bay area, and I haven't shown many of the maps or studies that we've done, I would propose that Metro B and Heart create a first study, a study proposal that we can work on together to see exactly how the system would fit and to get an idea of how beneficial it can be to the community as we look towards a pilot.
Mr. Melendez?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and giving us a presentation. It was great. And I want to applaud staff for, once again, identifying a unique solution. I remember when, you know, before I sat at my first Heart Board meeting, my overwhelming thought was funding, funding, funding. Funding is always going to be the issue. And now, you know, having served and learned more, I realize it's really funded solutions that are such a huge part of it, and I see this has that potential to be a quote-unquote "funded" solution. That's just, that's my term. I don't think there's, you know, I know it's a concept level, but I don't think there's anything about this that personally I don't like. I mean, it's the potential for job creation, transit connectivity, and you mentioned that you're interested in identifying strategic partnerships and stakeholders. I think that's incredible. I look forward to hearing more. I know you have a longer meeting tomorrow, so I won't get into the details, but I look forward to hearing more. And I would even go so far without getting into my personal situation that I'm a future, I guess, piece of pollen. I don't know what you would call your riders, but I'm hanging on to the leg of the honeybee.
I refer to you as something good.
Yes, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
No, but on a serious note, I actually have, if I had better connection options, I personally would be able to use. And so, thinking about this conceptually, it's exciting for me personally, so I really look forward to hearing more about it. One quick question. Is your discussion with us today your first discussion east of the Mississippi? Or would this be the first, I guess, tangible opportunity?
The first discussion outside of academia east of the Mississippi. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious about that.
First community.
You know, it's interesting that we have, staff has positioned us to potentially be kind of a pioneer east of the Mississippi, a little coming, bringing it back over. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Roche?
I just wanted to comment on something that Director Bergen mentioned, and that was a workshop where we might be able to invite in other services, because I know there's many out there that have been trying to break in the market that may have other, you know, models to consider in addition to him. And I think this is, you know, very promising what I'm seeing here. But this is an area where there is, you know, a lot of growth and change, and it might be worth maybe doing an RFI or something to try and get some other, you're smiling, getting some other input, just, you know, before we embark on, you know, just so we can have all the information at our disposal.
Thank you much. I'm smiling at our poor, overworked procurement staff. He smiles more every time another task ends up on them. We'll definitely get with him about guidance of how something would be appropriate to proceed in that viewpoint. I'd also say Wednesday, the Tampa Bay Partnership is hosting their Transportation Forum, and I believe Lyft will be there on the technology panel. I'm not sure if Uber canceled or not. I'm on that panel, too, so I'll have a chance to make some more connections. And we've also reached out to the Tampa Transportation Alliance, which is the local cab, essentially consortium, that has done some contracting with Sunshine Line to see what's worked for them. Could we piggyback on top of that for a pilot program? At the point we reached out, I think the county was in the middle of one of several 30-day extensions, so there was not a lot of life left in that contract. So when that contract kicks back off, we'll have that conversation as well. But condensing down, our procurement guys will keep us on the straight and narrow.
Okay. Mr. Bergen, in light of Director's ferocious comments, I'm fully prepared to make a motion this evening. However, I was inclined to defer based on their meetings and conversations tomorrow. And if the chair would commit to put this back on the agenda in the future, I think it's worthy of a future conversation if you'd like for us to defer on a motion tonight.
Absolutely. And if I could, anyone else had any other comments before I was going to make some comments? Commissioner Miller?
And having been on the PTC, I would probably suggest that we take a very close look at the rules and regulations of the PTC in Hillsborough County. This is an excellent idea. I think it's great. But I think that it really, really comes very close to Uber and Lyft, which right now, the guidelines and the rules of PTC prevent them from doing what they're doing. Of course, they're getting fined. I wish that, I don't know how long he's going to be here, that he would have an opportunity to sit down with the new executive director of PTC and talk to that person before he goes any further. Because I would hate to see us really get involved in moving something along and we run into a roadblock because of rules and regulations of the PTC. But I think that if we're going to do that, if we're going to have a workshop, Mr. Bergen, probably to bring PTC executive director on board to at least hear what they have to say.
Okay. Commissioner Bergen? I mean Beckner. Oh, Freudian slip, sorry. Now that Sharp's not here, I can say what I want. Go ahead.
One thing that came to mind, and maybe legal can also take a look at this, is that how we end up, if this is a route that we end up going, and working with an organization like Metro B, is there a way that it can be constructed that Heart could contract with somebody like Metro B and that there is a somewhere, something like the private citizen would sign up? For instance, like they buy Heart passes and stuff. What if there was a app-based subscription that they can buy through Heart, and this is an extension or something of public transportation? Is it public transportation option? I'm just thinking outside the box, potential different ways that they could operate within public transportation realm.
The short answer is yes. There's a variety of ways we could structure it. It'd be in the nature of a public-private partnership of some kind, and the possibilities are pretty much infinite. So yes, you could get there.
So it's possibly that it could be structured so that it wouldn't necessarily, the rigid rules of the Public Transportation Commission would not necessarily apply?
Quite likely. I made the note when you mentioned it. I made the note when Les Miller mentioned it. But we would have to look at those rules to make sure. So it's possible, but I just couldn't get to it.
Well, if I may, you know, actually, I was going to make a comment along the lines of what Commissioner Beckner just made. And this is much more specific, which is, I think that T-BARDA, by virtue of their carpooling situation, I think this fits more into a carpooling arrangement, primarily because it is to a defined destination, and that they set up the, they set up the travel based on, you know, calls and to where they need to go. I mean, that's what we do with T-BARDA now, in terms of the carpooling. So it's sort of the same thing. That's why I don't look at it as a car sharing, the same way that Lyft or Uber is. And I may be wrong about that, but because of the very defined nature of what they're doing, the very defined nature of where they're going to go, because obviously, you're going to stops along a transit corridor and not necessarily to any place they want to go. I think that there's a lot more leeway in terms of what you really are versus what Uber and Lyft currently are. That's just my opinion, based on some of the things that I know. I do agree with Commissioner Miller, though, that we definitely have to vet everything, make sure that we're not stepping on any toes or anything else. But I would love to, have you shared this yet with the folks at T-BARDA yet? Or, I assume they're going to be around tomorrow and for the summit and for some of the other things?
I'm not certain who the attendees are with our meeting tomorrow, but we have been in close contact with T-BARDA about the Vampul program, and in general, the opportunity to expand that with a reverse option of an e-shuttle. The hallmarks of their Vampuls and Carpools are that they are, for lack of a better expression, a civilian driver. So one of the Carpoolies, or one of the Carpoolies, ends up driving, and they have the security checks in the background. So the distinguishing characteristic here, one of the many may be that this is a vehicle with a screened and trained driver. But we are working closely with them on where we can go in the future with that, and we'll add this into the conversation.
Okay, terrific. Well, if there's nothing else, I, oh, Dr. Bozine?
Just a quick comment. I don't, I would encourage us not to use existing PTC guidance as a prerequisite to what may or may not be viable in the future. I mean, the whole world is evolving rapidly as it deals with app-based and technology-based mobility options, and it's a powerful industry that's changing the regulatory world rapidly, at least rapidly in the rest of the country. And so I don't want to, I don't want to enter this with any preconceived notions about what can or can't be done. Obviously, we need to be respectful, and the foundational elements of safety and et cetera are important to keep in mind, but I don't think we should presume anything at this point.
Okay, and having heard from the board, we will make sure that this comes up on a future agenda. Hopefully, maybe on the next month's agenda. Well, actually, do we have a next month, or do we have a?
FGA.
An FGA? Okay. Maybe on the FGA committee, and then bring it before us then on the next regularly scheduled agenda, so that we can talk a little bit more about it. I do think that, reach out to T-BARDA, PTC, and some of the other players out there so that we can figure out what this fits into. I really think it does, if it's outside of PTC, that's my personal opinion. But let's look at it and see what it is. Mr. Edelberg, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Is there anything else you want us to know?
I would just want to thank you very much for your time. I'll look forward to this collaboration. Thank you.
Terrific. How did you like the humidity versus Los Angeles?
It's frankly, I haven't felt rain on my skin for six months, so it's a pleasure.
We were happy to oblige. Thank you. Let's finish up this agenda. I do not have anything to report for this month's chair's report. I think our CEO has some points to make, and then we'll go over to our legal department.
Just a few things. The Chamber of Commerce puts together their annual wish list for the legislative session. They send out an email saying, hey, what do you want us to talk about? The deadline is September 30th, so if there are any issues that individual board members would like us to make sure on the radar, either with the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce or in general legislative for the session upcoming, we have an opportunity to combine this feedback and get it to the chamber. So a little more strength in voices. Speaking of the chamber, I joined the county administrator with a presentation today at the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce to the Transportation Committee. Just one of their mobility proposals that they have been taking around. This was the first meeting that I have been at since the August 12th meeting. So just slides from the county presentation and just an overview. I, of course, said nothing about anything but transit, since that made me very boring with the Chamber of Commerce presentation, and I was okay with that. And again, we've got the Transportation Forum coming up on the 24th, so Wednesday, over in St. Pete. And after that meeting, I'll be meeting with Justin Day and the State Secretary of Transportation, talking to them about toll lanes and the future of toll lanes here, thanking them for extensive state support on the Fairbox program, which just keeps getting better, and also talking to them about options for the CSX crossing here for the insurance cost for streetcar. And Jeff, you spent the day with our environmental folks, didn't you? Did you want to share anything about that? You don't, that's a no?
It was a long day.
Our ESMS audits?
Today was our ESMS gap audit by Virginia Tech University. Actually, we are entertaining them at the Columbia Restaurant here in 10.5 minutes, and it was a long day. What we received was feedback that we have a very strong program. Out of the 10 transit agencies across the country that are part of this program, we are one of three that they feel very comfortably, that will take little work to get us ISO-certified in the next 12 months, which is great news and great work by the team.
Perfect. And we accept the invitation to Columbia. Thank you. That is it. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, because I know it's running late for some people. I submitted to each director for their consideration a summary of the departing board member approach. We don't need to go through it tonight. I would like you to look at it. It really just fills in the gaps we spoke about previously, identifying when a vacancy occurs, what the process is when that vacancy occurs, so we give the appointing member an opportunity to make that appointment. So I think you'll find it fairly straightforward, hopefully not unnecessarily convoluted, and solves our problems. But we can, you know, take action on that later, but look through it, and probably our next board meeting, maybe we can take some action on it. If you have any comments, give me a holler. We'll be happy to work on it. Another issue that was brought to my attention, and has actually affected several board members, deals with a form that you have to sign when it comes to procure- deals with a form that you have to sign when it comes to procurement. And that form creates issues or asks you to speak to whether or not you have any conflicts of interest and to make representations regarding your distance from any of the competing entities and the fact that you have solicited essentially nothing of value. We are in the process, Marco Sandusky and I are looking at our ethics code. We don't really have a well-coordinated ethics code. If you look at our policies, there's some of them in, I think it is 120.02, there's some in 200.02, there's some in the employee manual, there's some in the procurement manual, they're all over the place. And unfortunately, they're not entirely consistent. They don't take into account, for example, among other things, a political contribution. As you know from recent Supreme Court cases, a political contribution is a very different form of speech. It's a protected First Amendment form of speech. Recently, the U.S. Supreme Court took cert, took jurisdiction, I'm going to say it was Serrari, took jurisdiction on the case that prohibits judges from soliciting contributions because that's a political activity. So political activity is one of the paramount, if not the paramount, First Amendment value, and we need to make sure we address that specifically, and we do not. So there is a lot that needs to be done. We're going to come to you with elaborated, in-depth code. We need a process for reporting, we need a process for appeal, and we need to make sure we handle things effectively in ways. Looking at the code, believe me, there's more problems than I realized. So anyway, that's, that's my general point, if anybody else wants to add anything more to that.
No, I was just going to say, and thank you for bringing that up, because I've had to voluntarily withdraw from sitting on the procurement committee. In fact, when you look at the form that you're asked to sign, I would imagine it may present a difficulty for any elected official that is able to appropriately sign that form because it doesn't address the issue of past contributions or having ever received any type of contributions from firms and things like that. So thank you for bringing that up and addressing that, because I think it's important that we're able to clarify that policy and make sure that we're able to have the appropriate disclosures.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct. It is way too broad.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner, because after I had heard about the issue that you had with the ad hoc committee, I started to think about the procurement, because I was on that committee the last time, and wondering whether or not I had received any political contributions from any of the people that were applying before us. And I don't think I had, but nonetheless, it made me worried in terms of what we were doing going forward, because of course I did not look at a political contribution as something that was valuing me specifically as based on what that broad language was. So I appreciate you doing that and looking into it, and so that, you know, since we do have quite a few elected officials here, we want to make sure that we're not, we're not doing something we shouldn't be doing. So.
And maybe part of that also, Mr. Smith, is maybe having a disclosure form, so we can look at the language, but also a disclosure form. So you can still, sir, you still have received, but you're just disclosing what you perhaps have received.
That was the alternative solution to the question that came up in your situation, but without that pre-existing, I didn't want to put you in a position where someone could second-guess your statement.
Correct, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can change the board and get rid of all the elected.
Okay.
Everybody, you're going to replace everybody with Cutter? Is that, you're going to, everybody's going to be assented from Cutter?
Familiar with the term coup d'etat? I mean, you are the vice chair after all. Anyway. Thank you. Is that it, David?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. One housekeeping item, Commissioner Sharp had written a letter to us saying that he was, had a conflict for today, and that was the reason why he could not make it to today's meeting. Is there anyone in the public that wished to address this board at this time for up to three minutes? I see no one. Any old or new business? Anything else before this board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.